Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to open this meeting of the Arlington ISD Board of Trustees for December 6th, 2012 at 5:30 PM. The Board of Trustees will be going into closed session pursuant to Section 551.074 to consider the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employee, or to hear complaints or charges against a public officer or employee for the following purpose: the appointment of a superintendent. We will reconvene into open meeting at 6:00 PM exactly. See you then. I'll call back into open session this meeting of the Arlington ISD Board of Trustees for December 6th, 2012. Thank you all for coming out tonight. We are here for a very special occasion. This evening we have several student groups performing. As you arrived today, you were likely greeted by Student Leadership Advisory Board members. These students are leaders at each of our high schools and are working with the board to provide student input and feedback as part of our strategic plan. We also have six of our Culinary Arts students in the Career Technology Education Program here helping at the food stations this evening. I think they're pre-culinary arts students, something like pre-AP. I also want to thank our string quartet from Martin High School and the director, Michael Stringer, for entertaining us before the event started. I understand we have a number of elected officials in the audience. If you're an elected official and you wave at me, I will introduce you. Robert Rivera, City Council. I see Michael Glasby back there, City Council. Our Fire Chief, Mr. Paulson. Former trustees, former presidents of the board, Jim Ash. Mike O'Donnell. I see former board member back there, Wayne Ogul. Last chance. Apparently, he's the owner of this building. And State Representative, our favorite, Ms. Diane Patrick. City Manager, Trey Yelton. All right, we're gonna go. I'm gonna introduce the I Am performers. Let me tell you about them before they come out. I Am is a motivational program provided by Dance Theater of Arlington for 4th grade students at Berry Elementary School. It is based on dance movement and interaction with arts professionals. Tonight, we are joined by Persis Ann Forster and some of the I Am students who will be performing for you. And on the piano, we have Gera Winchester and Diane Brinstaff. Please welcome them.
(Singing) Hi neighbor, hi neighbor, what are you doing? What are you saying? Hi neighbor, hi neighbor, throw your worries away. Come on and shake my hand and give a good big round. They make you feel so grand to give your chin up. I'm shouting, hi neighbor, hi neighbor, time to smile and say hi.
I'm Penny.
I'm Jessica.
I'm Alicia.
I'm Brooke.
I'm Otis.
I'm Travis.
I'm George.
I'm Aldo.
I'm Gabriel.
Eric.
I'm Maria.
I'm Carlos.
We're the Sammy Mary I Am dancers for Berry Elementary. We appreciate your fine guest today, and congratulations to Dr. Cavassos. And one more thing to say.
Hi neighbor, hi neighbor, what are you doing? What are you saying? Hi neighbor, hi neighbor, throw your worries away. Come on and shake my hand and give a good big round. They make you feel so grand to give your chin up. I'm shouting, hi neighbor, hi neighbor, time to smile and say hi.
Next, I'm gonna bring up Kalechi Ike, Kalechi Ike, 6th grader from Hale Elementary. Kalechi spoke at our kickoff celebration at the beginning of this school year, and he was so fabulous that we thought we'd bring him back tonight. He's gonna lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Before I say the Pledge of Allegiance, I have a few stuff to say. Thank you, Dr. Cavassos, for letting me have this chance to say the pledge, and thank you for having, for, thank, thank you for letting me speak at convocation. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. And if you would join me in a moment of silence, feel free to pray any way you want. Thank you. We have one agenda item tonight. I hope I can find it. It's an action item. It says, "Consider Appointment of a Superintendent." I need a motion.
Make a motion that we take the, make a motion that we accept bringing Dr. Cavassos as a full-time superintendent for the ISD. AISD.
Second. Motion by Mr. Hibbs, second by Dr. Reich. Is there any discussion?
Each one of us were given two minutes to say something, so put us on the clock. Dr. Cavassos, immediately after you were asked to be the interim superintendent, you and I had lunch one day, and we had a very candid, very, a very great conversation because I was able to see your heart, I was able to see your vision, and before we left that lunch, I looked at you and I said, "Go win ya a job." And today, you've won that job, and I'm so excited about that. The Arlington School District is going to move progressively in a positive direction under your leadership, and I'm just happy that I'm gonna be able to be a support to
Dr. Cavassos, I am so pleased to be able to call you Arlington's newest superintendent. Your skill, your personality, your strong ethic make you a perfect fit for what Arlington ISD needs as CEO to implement our bold strategic plan. I'd like to quote Ben Franklin to summarize our strategic plan. He said, "You can tell me, I'll forget. You can teach me, I may remember. Involve me, and I'll learn." And that's essentially our vision. That summarizes it for, and it's applicable to our students, to our staff, our faculty, our parents, our community, our entire community, our citizens, our businesses, our for-profits, nonprofits, faith-based, otherwise, our academic partners, our governmental partners, and on and on. You've been there every step of the way in developing that vision, and I truly believe that you agree with us and see the transformational potential that Arlington ISD has to become what public education needs to be. Our vote that we're about to take signifies our trust in you and your ability to translate that vision into reality. So with that, I will say congratulations. I will say enjoy this moment, and I look forward to many, many more moments of accomplishment shared with you into the future.
Dr. Cavassos, for the first time in months, I see you sitting down tonight. I'm glad to see that. Over the last months and years, we've talked a lot, Dr. Cavassos, about how, how special a place Arlington is and how special the schools are, and what a place with a legacy of excellence for our students. Over the years, we've nurtured engineers and entrepreneurs, we've nurtured artists, we've nurtured even ship designers. I'm really excited to see what our students today, where they're going. I was thinking of it this morning, and the students that attended kindergarten today in Arlington schools will retire from their careers in the year 2072. I don't think we can even imagine what 2072 will bring, but we're preparing students for it today. The one thing that we do know without a doubt, education is what will take them there. So, Dr. Cavassos, that's why I'm very excited about your superintendency because I know your creativity, your talent, your passion, and your laser focus on the best educational outcome for each and every student. AISD is in very good hands. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, for being here, first of all. I appreciate your attendance in this very important evening for Arlington ISD and for our city of Arlington in general. Dr. Cavassos, congratulations to you. I know you've worked tremendously hard, not just the last few months, but the last 13 years since you arrived here at Arlington to make sure that our students receive the very best education that is possible. And congratulations to the board, because I believe that the work that we've put in the last few years in making sure that we're aligned, that we have a vision, that we have a plan, really culminates tonight in naming Dr. Cavassos as our superintendent. There's a lot of, a lot of things that we can be excited about as a city, because in Dr. Cavassos, Arlington has a visionary leader, somebody that we know can take that vision that we've created, and he was part of it. This strategic plan that we've been talking about for several months, he was one of the builders of it. So, we don't have to sell him on it. He already gets it. He understands it. He understands that leadership is a collaborative process in a school district, and I think that his staff appreciate that of him and respond to that and follow his leadership. So, with a proper alignment, with a great vision, with a clear understanding of how we're gonna get there, I am 100% sure that we're going to achieve those lofty goals of 100% of our students succeeding. It's a lofty goal, but I am 100% sure that we can achieve it. Congratulations.
It's obvious that aside from his brilliance and his ability to have the vision that the board has, we have developed this strategic plan, which is very bold, and he was part of the development of that. There are things about Dr. Cavassos that anyone who meets him immediately can see. This is a man who has respect for every individual, whether it's the janitor in the school, it's the student in the school, the teachers, principals, anyone that works with him. He speaks to them the same. There is no difference in the way he treats every single person that he talks to, and that's, that's a gift that he has. And it's one of the things I've watched him with, because I've, actually have known him for the last 13 years. When he first came to the district as Associate Superintendent, then as Deputy Superintendent, interim superintendent, and now the superintendent. And I have a great admiration for him because I've watched him grow and develop, and he has these abilities that just so amaze me. I've seen him diffuse situations immediately with a sense of humor, and I've gotten to know some of his brothers, and they have that sense of humor as well. And so, it's a gift in the family, I think. But I'm looking forward to the next few years working with you, and I know that you're vested in our school district. You have Teresa and Diego that are in our school system, so it's not just a job for you. You're a parent as well, and there is a big, strong commitment that you have for us. I love it that you're part of Arlington. I love being part of Arlington, and if some of you have noticed, I'm wearing my blue suede shoes because we're ready to rock and roll.
Dr. Cavassos, congratulations on being the new superintendent for the ninth-largest district in the state of Texas. I apologize for not being able to be there in person today, but instead, I'm in Chicago on a business trip, and I would much rather be celebrating this great day in the AISD. Luckily, I know we have many more celebrations coming in our near future. The city of Arlington and the AISD are very special places in my heart, as it is for many people in this room. I think I speak for many when I say I couldn't be more excited about you leading us into a time of progressive leadership. The schools determine the future of our community, and personally, I don't think there's a more important position in this community than the one you're about to take on. I also don't know if there is a more difficult position in this community, but we'll leave that one alone. As a board, the most important decision we have to make is who is going to be our superintendent. Well, I am now proud to officially say you are officially the superintendent of the Arlington Independent School District, and I don't think we could have made a better decision. You have already shown your exemplary leadership, and on behalf of the students, staff, community, future students, and former graduates of the AISD, thank you for your commitment to Arlington. I look forward to working with you and moving the AISD towards our high expectations and the goals of achieving today, excelling tomorrow.
I was just gonna tell you that Mr. Hogg could not be with us tonight, but apparently he told you. My kids in school today asked me why I was all dressed up, and I told them I had a date tonight, and they said, "Oh, does your wife know?" Apparently, she does, because she's sitting right there. I did not tell them that I was with 500 or 600 of my closest friends, including Marcelo Cavassos. Marcelo, I'm so proud of you. I know you can do the job. We meet all the time, we have dinner together, and we plan, and we'll continue to do that. We're not gonna drag this out any longer. Board members, please vote. Now, you've all seen the president's signed documents. He uses like 10 pens. Well, we only have one here.
we are excited to be a part of AISD's future with you as our new superintendent. We're happy you're shaping our future, Dr. Cavassos. Congratulations, Columbus Elementary. Congratulations, Dr. Cavassos.
Dr. Cavassos, our future is brighter thanks to you.
Congratulations, Dr. Cavassos.
Here's "Congratulations, Dr. Cavassos" in 10 different languages from the Newcomer Center.
Bangla.
Donoat, Dr. Cavassos.
Somali.
Ballo, Dr. Cavassos.
Japanese.
Umedeto, Dr. Cavassos.
Urdu.
Shabash, Dr. Cavassos.
Vietnamese.
Vaisai, Dr. Cavassos.
French.
Felicitacion, Dr. Cavassos.
Portuguese.
Parabase, buong trabaho, Dr. Cavassos.
Chinese.
Henvam.
Tanto asso.
Arabic.
Mungro, Dr. Cavassos.
Spanish.
Felicidades, Dr. Cavassos.
Kirundi.
Levdiyazakomakodje, Dr. Cavassos.
Way to go, Dr. Cavassos.
We are ready for you to help shape our future.
We are excited to be a part of the Arlington's future with you as our new superintendent.
Way to go, Dr. Cavassos. West Elementary says, "With you leading our future, nothing can stop us."
Dr. Cavassos, Piercey Elementary is excited about you shaping our future.
We love the AISD, and we loved you.
You know, they say you should never go on right after kids or animals. So, I'll be the buffer for you. Dr. Marcelo Cavassos started his teaching career as an English teacher in the Mission Consolidated ISD in 1990. In 1992, he moved to McAllen ISD where he taught English and government. He was named the Secondary Language Arts Supervisor for Mercedes ISD in 1993 and became Associate Advisor for San Benito Consolidated ISD in 1995. Dr. Cavassos went to work somewhere for the Texas Education Agency Department of School Finance and Support in 1998. Joined AISD in 1999 as Assistant Superintendent, and blah, 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 blah. Okay. In addition to his professional accomplishments, Dr. Cavassos is active in the community. He serves on the Our Community, Our Kids Policy Committee, the Richard Greene Scholars Committee, the River Legacy Foundation Board, and the Arlington ISD Education Foundation Board. He is also active in the Key Elementary Dads Club. He is a member of the Knights of Columbus, and the Altar Server Coordinator at St. Matthew Catholic Church. Dr. Cavassos, you get to speak now.
Well, good evening. Remember how this works? Good evening. That's how it works, right? First of all, I want to thank the school board for their vote of confidence in me and my ability and my skill. I want to thank each and every one of you, Gloria, Tony, Jamie, Peter, Aaron, John, and Bowie, who's out of town. Thank you all very much for your vote of confidence. We've charted some new ground together, and I'm very proud of the work we've done thus far, and I look forward to the work we're gonna do in the future. So, I trust and respect each of you, and I thank you for your service to the community and to our students, first and foremost. So, thank you for this opportunity. I also want to thank the students who took time to be here this evening. Tomorrow is Friday, and I'm sure they have something in school, some test or something on Friday, but I want to thank them for taking their time and the parents for dedicating their time to be here tonight. I want to introduce my family, who you should know by now because they wrote an article in the paper about the fact that I was a nerd and stuff like that, so. But nonetheless, my wife, Nora, who I've thanked almost daily since I, we got married. She's, she's an inspiration to me. She's, she's the rock of the family. You think I'm strong and I have convictions, she's the reason that we're a strong family. So, Nora, thank you for what you do. My kids, Teresa and Diego. You can wave. And through this whole period of time of transition, and even now and today, it's been a whirlwind for them, and so we try to keep it just as stable as we can in our family, but I love them with all my heart, and that's all my being. I want to thank my family who was able to come tonight, part of my family. I'm the youngest of six, so some of them came. I want to thank my brother, Rick, who's a retired Border Patrol agent. Rick, thank you for taking the nine-hour drive to come. He's the law enforcement in the family, so he, we have that aspect also. My sister, Jeanette, who took the time to come too. She's a 3rd grade teacher in San Benito Consolidated Independent School District. And the rest of the family who is somewhere watching online perhaps. Our special guest, Peggy Quirk from our church. Thank you, Peggy, for being here. Peggy has been with us since, since we came in terms of helping our family and keeping us close to our faith. Mr. and Ms. Blakely, who are here, they are Teresa and Diego's grandparents in Arlington, and they love them. So, thank you, Mr. and Ms. Blakely. From our church, Father Phil, Father Alfredo, and Father Hector from St. Matthew's Catholic And the reason there's three is because our church is very, very large. I think on a, we, every given, any given weekend, we have 6,000 people that go through St. Matthew's Catholic Church. So, I thank you for taking your time to be here tonight. Let me see, make sure I got everybody, because that would be very awkward if I missed anybody. It's happened before. I'd like to just, a few words, and then I'm not gonna take too long either, because this is supposed to be a celebration. So, I just want to reinforce some things that our work is, is critical that we do in the school district to, to the lives of students. Every single day, it's, it's a critical thing that we do for, for our students, and our primary focus and my primary responsibility and the primary responsibility of 8,000 employees is to be of service to students. That's it. That's why we exist, to be of service to students. And so, the schools belong to the students and to the parents. It's a tool for their future. We have the privilege and the honor We have the privilege and the honor of leading those schools and managing those schools. But those schools belong to those kids because it's that, it's their tool for their future. And so I take that service orientation very seriously in, in what I do, and I've shared that with staff over and over. And so as we strive to accelerate the, the AISD, we must be committed to continuous improvement. And I've said that before as well, is that our focus should be about improving every single day. And it starts really with my improvement and the things in my development as a leader of an organization. But that we all have that opportunity to improve every single day. And I said this recently, you know, we expect that from our students, that every single day, they come better prepared than the day before. They, they achieve more than the day before. We should have that same expectation for ourselves as, as the adults in, in, in the building. So that's the orientation we, we should have. More importantly, tonight is really about us. And it's not about me, it's about us and the collective work that we do for our students. And, and it's really more about a demonstration of our commitment. And I'll tell you that over the last 13 years and certainly the last six months as interim superintendent, the dedication, the enthusiasm, the desire for this district to be a premier school district is pervasive in the community. And when you have that commitment pervasive in the community from our, from our business, our faith-based organizations, our schools, our students, our parents, our, our community members, when you have that as a pervasive thought and desire, nothing can stand in our way. And so I'm very fortunate to be serving at this time in Arlington's ISD's future and, and history. I want to again thank the Board of Trustees. I want to thank the senior staff that's here and all the teachers and principals that are here on the audience. It's because of the work you do every day that our students are successful. And that's, that's really, we're dependent on each other. In fact, we're interdependent on each other. The 8,000 employees we have, the 64,000 students, we have a relationship with the board and an interdependent relationship to be successful. And that's really our commitment. And so my commitment to you, the community, the board, is to keep that focus, is to keep the focus on our students and their outcomes and their, their expectations. And I've said this often, that the same dreams and aspirations that I have for my children, I have them for 64,000-plus students. Absolutely. And, and collectively, they will succeed if we have that, that perspective. So once again, thank you for taking your time. I know this is December and it's a busy time, but thank you for taking the time to be here tonight. It's a demonstration of our collective commitment.
And I get to thank everybody for coming out tonight. Congratulations especially to Dr. Cavassos. I want to thank our sponsors, the McCarthy Family, Dan Diopert Piano Texts, and Calloways of South Arlington. Also, I'm thanking Leslie Johnson, Amy Casas, and Lynn Nguyen and all the communications staff who put this together. I want to thank Jamie Solins, who's sitting right here next to me because she was the coordinator, as far as the board went, to plan this wedding reception. Think big. We're going to have a receiving line here in just a moment. I'd like Dr. Cavassos to come up here on this side. I'd like to get our honored guests to go through the receiving line first because I know some folks have other places they have to be today. And if everybody else would give them one minute or so, and then the receiving line will start and have at it. We're going to have the Sophia Ma from Butler Elementary, Delrena Nguyen from Bowie High School, and Emma Bruce from Martin High School will be playing the piano as we conclude our celebration. So let's give them a hand before we get going. we'll open up the receiving line. There's still food left, so help yourself. I don't want to take it all home. And we are adjourned.